School Board Meeting of July seventeenth. First item of business is the approval of the minutes for June twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to approve minutes as presented.
Generally, in further discussion on that. Hearing none, all of your favors, we can probably say aye. Special means, how about your prayers? And next up is correspondence. And I've seen we got the for education services, whatever than that. I did not receive any correspondence. Then I left this administration.
Okay, hello, um, just a couple of things, so we received our audit engagement letter from Buzz and Sanderson for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Um, they'll actually be coming in next week to do a one day field work primarily just trying to look at student activities accounts and they sample films and and look at process and procedures, so they're gonna start, but then the main field work will be in October as it normally is. So the engagement letter just needs to be signed by the school board chair and superintendent, we have that here. Just an update on some of the summer projects. They are in full gear. Can't believe we're mid-July now. The safe grant projects, including the windows and doors at the middle high school and the elementary entryway are going well, the windows and doors are at the middle high school are about ninety-five percent done. Um, there's like some trim work, a lot, a little finish work that has to be done. And they should be done by maybe the end of this week. With a few maybe lingering things. We've been holding a project meeting in Cott Hill every two weeks, Cott Hill is the um, project manager, they're the ones we have the contract with for the safe grant projects. And they plan to start the elementary entryway next Monday. And it should take about a week, it should be, should be substantially completed by the twenty-sixth. Um, one item that came up in the last two weeks um, is the automatic closures at the elementary school, currently there are none. It's like the handicap accessible. Um, we discussed this at yesterday's meeting and both our architect and Cott Hill concur that this was indeed missed and needs to be included. Do need that in the construction. So the cost for the hardware and and installation of the automatic closures is eight thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. And there's no money left in the grant to cover this. Um, at this point, I would recommend that in order to keep the project moving, we utilize our general fund for now, and if we get to the end of the year, um, you could take it out of the trust fund, but I think at this time of the year, we're probably okay, there's always some little bit of money left in maintenance anyway, so. Um, so that's what we would like to recommend to do. I mean, it's not under ten thousand, but it is. We can't fit it into the grant, so it has to come out somewhere.
Do you need action on that?
I mean, I guess you could just say, yeah, go ahead with that, we don't have anything formally to sign with them at this point, I told them I would get back to them as soon as possible. To give them the go-ahead to keep going.
And that would be a change order that?
It would be a change order, yeah, it would be submitted as a change order.
Was it no contingency bills in the bid?
No, I mean, the bid was very tight, I don't know if you remember, we had a hard time getting a contractor and it's very, very tight, I mean, we worked with them to get it down to fit the grant. We do what we.
Yeah, I never.
Right, we adjusted the scope of work to fit.
We adjusted the scope of work to fit the grant. But this was just missed, you know, because.
And they start Monday, when is he assigned?
Over. Yeah, but it's just a front entryway, I think we're gonna block that off, so they'll enter. Yeah, there's other ways, yeah.
So, so as far as what you need from us tonight, you wanna vote on?
Yeah, we can have a vote to to move ahead with that.
With essentially that?
Change order.
Estimate estimate for a change order.
Yeah, for the automatic door closures at the elementary.
And is it the automatic openers or the?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You push the button. Wasn't in the initial. And that will get them into the vestibule, though, so it'll have to be posed into the building.
Definitely, yeah, exactly, that whole area will be blocked down like that.
Right, 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 yeah. You want a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the, can you repeat the amount?
Eight thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
For the automatic door openers, ADA automatic door openers for the elementary vestibule.
And uh, any further discussion on that? All of the various signatures saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, sentience, much cares.
Thank you, thank you, and that, um, just a couple more updates, the middle high school flooring, uh, the middle school flooring project is estimated to be completed by July twenty-fifth. The floors are all prepped and ready for the installation of new flooring. Um, DHI is working on the final pieces of the middle high school HVAC project, which includes the installation of the air handlers in the middle school wing and the math wing. And most of that work is done up on the roof, but once they put the air handlers in, they'll have to do the final hookup in the classrooms in those areas, so they estimate that they'll be completed by August second, so.
And that's the last piece of that whole HVAC project, fantastic.
Yeah.
Probably a little bit troubleshooting.
Yeah, there'll be like a much less than troubleshooting, yeah.
Fantastic.
But I mean, that was up and running this winter, it was just. And finally, uh, Mark, we see two tractor estimates that he'll discuss in a second, I just wanted to remind you that during the budget process, the tractor money was removed from the regular operating budget, and we discussed using the equipment trust fund for the down payment and look at a lease purchase financing for the next three to five years. Um, when we decide to move forward with the purchase of the tractor, the board will need to hold a public hearing to expend the money from the trust fund, and I did send initial figures out to the leasing companies to see what it would look like, but at this point, I really can't give them. I I need a final number to give them, to have those numbers.
How does that work, we're gonna do a lease purchase for over three to five years or something, so we're, we're, I know when we like do the the union contract and such, we have to vote on all, have all those numbers.
But this is something we, yeah, we.
Equipment purchase, that doesn't matter.
It's it's different, yeah, it's got, because it's a lease purchase, it's got to have been followed in the same rules as a contract like that. It will be a municipal lease, meaning that it will will be able to get out of it, say, in something.
Oh, you didn't ask.
We structure that way, that's why we have to go through a municipal leasing company.
Gotcha, okay.
See, I pay a little bit extra for that.
Not really, it's just that's all the word, wording in there that we.
It's not often that it's down.
I mean, even if we went through another company, we have to do a municipal type lease.
Yeah.
That allows that, has the laws in there. Not continue, something happened with that.
So, are we waiting on?
Yeah, so Mark said I actually um, talk about the votes now, sorry.
Yes, anyways, uh, we're now looking at different pieces of equipment to replace the tractor. And uh, been looking at the Bobcat L twenty-eight. I got a bid from uh, uh, Woodsville, uh, Bobcat Woodsville, I'm sorry, and anyways, they came in at a price of uh close to sixty-three thousand dollars, which, you know, Joe and I talked with the board here, uh, we uh, we talked about different things, we want a second bid, which I understand. I went through uh, Dalton Motors and they came up, and we were starting comparing apples to apples. And what we decided to bid on um, was uh, the standard uh uh, bucket and a plow and a um, some forks. And with a uh twenty-four month warranty, fifteen hundred hours. Dalton Motors came in at forty-four, nine eighteen. And the other group came in at fifty-six, eight twenty-five. So Dalton Motors had a better price. I'd like to go with them. And the only thing that wasn't included in this was a trade-in for our tractor, which they both offered around seven thousand. And then, uh, the other thing that I'm gonna need is a sander. And the sander that mounts on this unit are five thousand dollars, they both came in at five grand. So.
So you're talking sixty-one, eight twenty-five.
What's that?
So you're talking sixty-one, eight twenty-five, if you add the sander to the fifty-six.
But, well, I'm not gonna go with the fifty-six, I think we should go with the forty-four, ninety.
Sorry, yeah.
And then uh, take the seven off for the, they got traded. I think it's in our best interest just to trade the thing in, instead of trying to sell it outright, or keeping it.
Have you looked into selling it outright?
No, I have not.
Looked online, see if. These tractors.
I see tractors like that going for ten all the time, ten thousand, twelve thousand, but then you have to show people. That's a lot.
Yeah, but having to show people and take a little time is probably worth maybe the three to four thousand dollars to the district.
Okay.
If you're talking a couple hundred, probably not, but you're talking three to four thousand, that's not chump change, it might be worth the effort.
That's up to you guys.
How long is the quote for? How long is the quote for?
Both these quotes are good for thirty days.
I don't, I don't disagree with Danny, but you know, how long you put it on Facebook Marketplace or whatever it is, like how how long are we prepared to wait?
What size is that, what is that tractor?
Um, which one, the?
The one we own. The one that we own.
Is a thirty-six horsepower. Four-wheel drive coyote.
Do, but I have no service.
Danny, you trying to buy it?
It's two thousand fifteen. Two thousand fifteen, we bought it, it was twenty-nine thousand. I've been trapped to shopping, so.
Well, I got a deal for you.
Give me a minute, because I love to take it.
Yeah.
I don't know thirty-one, thirty-six horsepower is enough, though.
All right, thanks. Mine needs all four, so I would go with one. I can't, my phone's not doing anything.
So uh, is the, is the plan to try to do something in the, in the near term?
I'd like to, because uh, the unit right now is starting to necklace on different things. And I'd like to have something that I'm not gonna be worried whether it's gonna operate for me in the morning.
Yeah. Uh, and is this like a, this is a wheel?
It's a, it's a it articulates in the middle. Okay, and um, it's, it's a cute little thing, Lou Malone has one, L twenty-eight, if you look it up. And the nice part about it is it's got the forks on it and it's designed to actually pick up weight, where our tractor does have your weight on the back, and if I try to pick something out of the truck, it doesn't work. And this would be uh really handy to be able to pick something out and plus it's small enough that can fit underneath our canopy around our doors and stuff, very maneuverable.
So, I guess we we are signing forward with that, then we need to schedule for trust up there. Um, I think our next meeting is this one first, last. So it'd be as soon as we could be able to do it.
Yeah, we might be able to. See if we can sell it, or, you know.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we might be able to, yeah.
Thirty days from now.
Right.
So it seems like.
At least we know the purchase price would be.
Right. I'm, I'm thinking in terms of we're, we're trying to have this, this is mainly a winter issue, right?
Right.
The need for this.
I use it in summer to move dirt and level stuff, stuff off of the playground and stuff that and sort of idea.
So if you were able to sell the, the tractor that the school owns now within a week or two, but not get this one for another month or so, would that could you do without one for three or four weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't, it would seem to me like there's any harm in always trying to sell it. We can't get through a little bit, use the money for thirty days anyway, so. Right, and it's yeah, I mean, I think it's likely that if, if, if we need to replace the, the unit, then it's something we just need to do, so. Uh, getting started on the process of getting rid of the old one, if it's gonna be possible to get it before I force that would be good. If it's if it's not possible, then we'll know by the time of that hearing, and it will will be set to approve the appropriate amount, although all we're doing is taking the, the down payment, right, it's just the ten thousand.
Yeah, I think that's our goal, almost virtually, yeah, ten thousand.
Can we use that?
It has to go in the general fund, doesn't it? Any sale of anything, does it have to be put in the?
Reach for the down payment. And then pay it out of the general fund as the offset?
No, it wouldn't.
If he sells it for ten thousand dollars.
Oh, that money, that, that would come through the general.
It has to go, yeah, go through, yeah.
It can't go into the trust fund, right?
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Can't just hand them.
I mean, it depends on how they, it depends on how they put it on here, they might just reduce our price like here.
That would be a, a trade-in.
Yeah.
But not, yeah, but, but if, if we're doing like a private sales, try to get a little more.
A trade-in, doing a private sale now, come in to the general.
It does have a radio and CD player.
CD player.
Pushing it, I should. I'm gonna look it up when I have something connected.
Get a lights on it, get a lights.
All right, so maybe, um, I guess what we would, we would do is, uh, and I don't know that we need to like officially vote on it, but maybe start the process of trying to unload that alone, or do we do, we are gonna need to officially vote on that actually, right? To approve the sale of the tractor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The sale of that.
And then there's a process, right, there's, is it, are we gonna have to go through the bidding the disposable property, there's a.
Yeah, we can try to sell it, and I think.
There's like a policy on it.
Yeah, there's a policy, I mean, you can sell it.
Can we?
There, there's multiple options, so we can do any, any disposal.
Can we motion now, like preemptively, say we won't take it? You know, we authorize the sale, no less than seven thousand dollars. Then everybody hears that and offers seven thousand dollars. I mean.
I mean, we could do the, go the field, steal the bid way, too. With the seven thousand dollar minimum. It's, it's really, there's, there's several ways to do it. I mean, I mean, there's several ways to do it, the goal is gonna be to get the most out of it.
I, I mean, I guess I, I'm looking for some guidance, so what do you think the best way to do this would be, because I, I mean, I don't know how we're, we're gonna facilitate a Facebook Marketplace sale. It doesn't seem like.
Yeah.
Like maybe, maybe we, maybe the best way to do it then is to, is to just advertise as a sealed bid.
Yeah, I think like we have sold.
Yeah, what the bids do before the la, the next meeting.
Yep.
And then we can, we can take the bids and if we get one that's um, above our minimum, we get something minimum that.
Then I can start the meeting with that, we get any, then.
Yeah.
To the public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, I, well, it's gonna be ten thousand dollars down payment no matter what. Right?
Yeah.
So we don't, we're gonna, what, what, what we're gonna be proposing at that trust my hearing is just the ten thousand dollars.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to do, structure that with the finance.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to make the payments work.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so I, the, the issue would be how much we're financing, as opposed to how much of the down payment that we're gonna come up with out of the trust fund, so. I think we can we can figure out the logistics of it all, but if we just, if we put it out towards sealed bids by you know, maybe the week before, next meeting.
Do we have to state a minimum? So that we don't have to take a bid?
Yeah, I think we should.
Absolutely. If you don't state a minimum, then you have to, then someone opposite Dolly will take it up, so. Yeah, let's do the minimum bid at seventy-five hundred or something.
Yeah.
The boys aren't too refusal.
They have to have that, yeah, yeah, so, okay. Sweet, and then if it doesn't, if we don't get that for it, then it goes for trade and after the hearing anyway, so. Well, you get a new Bobcat, but you not get a dump truck.
No dump truck. Does anybody have any questions to me on any of the products or anything, any concerns? Or, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mike, thank you.
Hi, Rich, you said all the items on your list?
No, that's.
Last one, okay, thank you. And Dr. Stine.
Thank you, uh, so our summer school programs are winding down, we've done things from credit recovery to math reading, literacy instruction, um, ball instruction for P E credit, hiking, kids have mountain bike, kayak, paddleball, pickleball, yeah, basically pickleball, and um, and then STEM robotics camp, most recently. So that shall be finished up by next week. Um, you already heard the information on the facilities. I've been in conversation with uh, the president of White Mountain Community College about what really doable elements could look like for this district with the homes that um, that all of the students have the opportunity to leave this school, this district with an associate's degree, so it's gonna take some time to develop, if they're one hundred percent on board with that, we have another follow-up conversation uh, at the end of the month, so it'll be our second um, one with them. I, probably Littleton, White Mountain, yep. So, and there's a lot of them online, too, so they could take it in other places, whatever the classes are, there's four different ways to do that, and we're trying to work out that partnership um, to offer more for our students, um, we did get our AP scores back, um, not all of them, but there was some really uh, excellent results in English. About fifty percent of the students who took that uh, got threes or fours, um, which is where we want, and all of the kids who took the US history got three or fours on it. Our science ones need some boosting, and we're waiting still for the mathematics. As we have, our administration has been in some training this summer, um, or will go, Title IX law has recently changed, so we'll be attending that next week. Um, our science, one of our science teacher has gone to uh, AP training during the summer, and that's in a response to our testing scores and the AP scores. And, um, and then um, we'll attend the education law summit this summer, imagine how we had three oh sixes, they're going through some reviews, so it's gonna impact uh, what we offer for our classes and curriculum. Um, and then our English teachers in the high school continue the work on their curriculum that they've been doing with uh, Dr. Kenneth Logan from Flemish State. And then Dr. Tolman, um, she's really been grew along the science of reading, and um, she will be offering monthly training K to twelve to our staff members on uh, what it means um, to have literacy across the curriculum and how to develop uh, kids about vocabulary in the upper grades. And then you saw the communication from um, North um, Country Educational Services. There are a couple of actions um, that'll need to take place tonight, and uh, the first three of those in this report are going to be taking place during the agenda at times, so we'll go through that. Um, one of the questions they did have is if you guys wanted the New Hampshire School Board um, Association to come at the beginning of one of your meetings to kind of go over the guidelines and goals. Um, as you have new members on the board and uh, just let me know.
That's a free service they provide.
That is a free service.
Absolutely, yeah.
For sure, so I'll schedule that with them. Um, as just a reminder, you guys will need to set your board goals in your packet of the goals that you guys used last time, so just let me know how you wanna proceed with that meeting and when. Schedule that. Their strategic plan, uh, we just spent, we spent two days reviewing what that plan looks like, uh, reflective of last year's progress on it, and then coming up with four main goals um, for the administration this year, really is reviewing what is competency-based education look like, we're still kind of not in align with uh what that should look like, making sure that we review our curriculum, when I went back and looked at some of our old stuff, we haven't done a formal curriculum review K to twelve probably since two thousand and fifteen, except for the high school English department started that last year, so we really need to get back on track with that piece, and then making sure all of our professional development and the supports in the school align with all of those curriculum reviews. Um, and then the last one is just strengthening that communication internally especially from, and everything from the superintendent down to our support staff, um, just so everybody uh and we've heard a lot of complaints, there's so many for calendars and people are confused of what's going on, so we spent some time um, working through what that will look like this year. Those are the four main areas we'll work on, and then just some upcoming dates for you guys to be aware. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great news on the, uh, with the White Mountain Community College, I love that piece, that's awesome, thank you for that.
Have we done anything?
Do our, have our students had access to college?
Yeah, they have access.
It's not like a full associate's degree program.
Or a full pathway, the, the great thing about the community college program is starting your sophomore year, you can take two classes free um, per year at a community college, and um, and then after that, it's a hundred and fifty points in our course, so it, it makes sense for us to
Yeah.
uh, look into that piece.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
And that would certainly the school would be funding, there's a reason why it's a part of it.
Yeah, hopefully, we can look at how we could use some of our title funding, um, or S R funding or other creative ways, um, the community college has grants, state department has grants, so once we start to develop that pathway, we'll start to align with funding to it.
Fantastic. Good stuff.
All right, and we see we got a
Yeah, I think his family has we found in the family have a pastor, they have family number.
Well, let us do that, yeah.
So sorry to hear that. So, um, he attended the principal conference, um, also, uh, I'm gonna skip down to bullet three on this because that will lead into bullet two, but I met with Dean Webster and Cardigan Mountain School to really look at their STEM program, they do a lot of things on prototyping, marketing, building, um, robotics or other type, uh, a lot of stuff on speed boots and different uh, engineering projects, um, so from that, um, we met with Mr. Webster about what is it gonna look like if we really had a formalized K to twelve STEM program doing our after-school robotics program, formalizing that more in our summer program, so we're gonna put together an advisory committee around that and ask community members, staff uh, who wants in the board to really guide what that could possibly look like um, in the district. Uh, there's a lot of excitement around that. At the end of the school year, um, Diana Pamplin, so Sarah Oden, visited Newcastle Elementary School, it's a small elementary school in New Hampshire, but it's the highest performing elementary school in New Hampshire also. So they really wanted to look at like what those co-teaching, multi-age, multi-grade, they do a lot of stuff on the science of reading, um, they came back really, really energized from that visit. Um, so I think both Mr. Webster and the uh, two kindergarten teachers who came back were very excited to see what can happen in other schools, so we'll have them during the opening days really talk about those visits and uh, lead um, some professional development for us this year. Uh, we created an S E L advisory committee, um, and in that they chose a program called Random Acts of Kindness, so we're gonna implement that K to twelve, and it's just you know, let them be kind to our neighbor type um, things, um, and then Trey has been working on some AI things, we also have, I don't know if you saw the clear touch panels, but we have a training happening this summer, we're really bringing those in and gonna infuse those into a school this year. Um, and we were able to put some in our S R grants to be able to get additional clear touch panels for our school.
Wow, cool.
And that Ashley uh, is transitioning nicely into her wall, she has brought us a lot of great energy, um, and that we have teachers going to responsive classroom, uh, training this summer, we finished up our data review, we demonstrated success. We'll continue to work on what that looks like and how we implement um reviewing those data pieces on a more regular basis to inform instruction at the elementary school, we'll do that through our literacy team that we currently have. Um, the end of the last year, we realized that um, there may be an issue of us implementing our attendance policy, so, and that we wanted to, our attendance isn't where we want it to be, um, some of the schools are down to sometimes in the eighty percent for attendance, and you really want that attendance over ninety-five, uh, ninety-seven, ninety-eight would be really great on a daily basis, so that committee got together and started reviewing some of those students who might be at risk and reviewing our policies and how we can get a little bit tighter on implementing those, so uh, that committee will continue to meet on a monthly basis this year to make sure that that's happening. And we already spoke about our science teacher going to AP um, training. So, depend of his report.
Yeah, sorry.
So I can, we can pull that up easily in Alma and watch school at the end of the year, not percentage, overall percentage of attendance. So um it's not where we want it to be. A hundred for you, it's just a touch of a button in our system. No, and welcome. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a committee reports, um policy, met tonight.
We did, we're gonna bring a couple of them to the first reading. Um next meeting, correct. Um however, the I I K F and I K F are, are the ones that um the credits required for graduation. Matt Manning came into the last meeting and asked if uh we would take off the online course credit, cause it's, you know, was put in the early two thousands to get kids to learn how to do online courses, which now they go to kindergarten, but I bet. So it's not necessary. And it could, that half credit could be used for, you know, uh uh electives, yeah. He just sees it as unnecessary and sometimes difficult to get um that online credit done. Cause they're doing other things online, it seems redundant. We're gonna bring that to you for first reading at the next meeting. However, the handbook needs to go out. If that's gonna be a change, um Sharon just wanted to know whether she should make that change in the handbook now in anticipation. I just wanna get a feel from the board before we go to first reading.
Well, it, I, I would just say first, I think that it's more than being able to use an iPad, what that credit is geared for. That, that half the credit is geared to learn how to take an online class. And that is a useful skill, how to navigate, you know, online curriculum, um things like that. That's a, that's a skill, how to manage your own time, how to engage with people online, things like that. So it's not just being computer savvy.
They're doing that kind of like a Google Classroom.
It was not the same as like college credits, but, but I also wanted to ask um your opinion, Doctor Study. I, I don't know if you're aware of this, this question and just what your thoughts are on it.
Yeah, I, I think that this can be hard to fill and sometimes we just do it to check the box. And I'm not sure it's as meaningful as we would like it to be. Um and however, I do think there, we write into a lot of kids' plans and other things, um how to use our online system of Alma where they check their grades, they submit their assignments. So they're doing, so that's similar to Blackboard other than posting.
Yep.
But you have that through Google Classroom. So I feel like it is keys together. I do, um as I brought up in policy, these are probably going to change the graduation requirements anyways. Um and we probably would need to remove that because of the new requirements under civics and rhetoric and other things we're gonna need to teach in the school for the three oh six.
How are the students fulfilling that half credit?
At this point, they were doing retroactive from COVID. So most of the kids who graduated in the last couple of years also participated in the monitoring, so that's all that was being.
So people, people aren't actually really do like taking an actual online course anyway at this point.
Some, we have some. But those are more under electives and then it fills that too.
Yeah.
I'm not sure kids are saying, I wanna take online, so I'm gonna go to V-Lax and do that. There are a few who have done that um to meet those requirements, but um most kids would probably take those as electives anyways.
So that these kids are taking a V-Lax course because they wanna take something that's not offered.
Which would still count.
And then they just.
And would still be offered.
Well, right, I'm just saying that
Right.
They still have that option, but they're just, they're not like going out to take a course specifically.
Right, right. So it's nothing we have to vote on or anything tonight. I just kind of wanted to get a feel on how the board felt, so Sharon, whether she can proceed with the handbook revision or not.
In one of those, one of those um presidential requirements likely to change. So like over this, like before the school year starts.
Yes, I believe they're going to.
Before the, before the school year starts? No, I was thinking more like mid-year.
So does it make sense to just omit that section, you know, from our handbook at this point? If we're gonna change, if it's all gonna change anyway?
I, I feel like the handbook is a flexible and fluid document that we're gonna have to send manuals on if we change it anyways. So to me, if you change it now or you change it later, it's not gonna. I mean, it's, it's good to be able to go over this with the kids, but I'm not sure that it's formally done that way in the way that it's intended.
Uh and I, I guess my concern would be if, if, you know, we have kids that are going into their senior year, junior year, and they're structuring their course selections to accommodate this schedule only to learn that, you know, come fall, it all.
We started to structure the schedule in the school with the anticipation that that was going to happen and looking that in. So we've kind of been uh doing that right along.
So I guess the, the question is, are we in favor of or will we, if they were removing that requirement, understand it's like they're gonna get removed anyway? And then also, if that's what's gonna happen.
Right, I mean, if, if we're all pretty much on board, it's still gonna go through the process of first and second reading and all that. Um it's just uh giving Sharon a leg up with the whole handbook process. That's saving her a little extra work at the end.
Yeah, alright, is anyone having thoughts on it? I guess if, if it looks like, if it looks like it's going that way anyway.
Is anybody super opposed to that at this moment, without it? Correct. Cause it would still be available. It's still, I mean, the rate puts V-Lax, so if we remove that online credit, half credit, then it would go as an elective, which could still be V-Lax. But it could also be other electives.
I think it's pretty open right now. It doesn't, it just has to be V-Lax. Really, you could take a correspondence course, like through the University of
Right.
Missouri and it would count as an online course. Um so I mean, I think it's pretty flexible, but I also understand the reason to not have it anymore since most kids are using their, if they wanna take an online course, they're taking an online course inside an area that they're interested in. It is difficult to force a kid to take a class.
Correct.
A lot of kids are not successful at online courses. But if they don't, you know, I, I'm picturing my own son, like I, he's probably never gonna be good at it.
My assistants, my son, I've got his, just saying.
I think there's a difference between you know, a course where you're and trainings too. If you got a job not in technology, you're probably gonna have to go to an employer, sit down and take some type of you know, hell, your driver's test, right, is, is really electronic and it's.
I mean, our, our, um Matt Manning came to the, the committee meeting, last committee meeting and was pretty passionate about, um he strongly feels that it needs to come off. And it's.
Doctor study that it's gonna come off anyway. Because we're gonna have to add personal finance at some point. And we're gonna have to add, um I think it's like something logic and rhetoric. And then I think there, there, the G O E's reducing and civics and civility is a separate class. So those three are gonna have to be added in, so at some point, I don't think you would have room for.
Right.
And so that is imminent coming?
I, I think it's coming this, I'll find out at the law conference where all that stands with the state board.
Right.
We're also emailed that, that list, right, that I think we're the only district that has it.
Right, right.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We're stuck in the early two thousand.
Originally, when they put it in.
Online courses?
Yeah. They just wanted to get everyone familiar with that.
Right.
Now it's again, V-Lax. It's everywhere.
When they put this credit on here, we still dial up internet.
I remember the kids doing it at home and then.
Yeah. You can't make their phone call.
It is, if it seems imminent, I think I would support just changing it now. That would be my thought.
We can all, uh we'll get.
Provoking thought here.
Perfect, which is always a good thing.
Note to Jasmine's point, I mean, we're the only district.
Yes. So I think give the thumbs up, Sharon.
Katie, did you have any thoughts on?
Uh no, it seemed like we just made a circle.
I think we're good. Right, so yeah.
And then we'll have it on for first reading at the next meeting, perfect. So now onto the policies that we have on here for second reading that just need to be approved tonight. Does anybody have any on any of them?
I did, one thing. It's on A D C prohibiting, prohibitions regarding tobacco products. Anyway, I appreciate you not printing that out.
I do have one copy.
But yeah, can I borrow it? Of course, I can look it up on my phone, but. Um my, my, my only thought on that one was um with the, with the new prevalence of uh these like nicotine pouches that I see everywhere. It's like a little nicotine pouch and like, they're, they're literally everywhere.
It's like a little tobacco thing, right?
It is, but it's not tobacco.
Right.
And so it, it doesn't fall under any of our things. So, cause we have tobacco products and then we have e-cigarettes and e-liquids and liquid nicotine, but I don't think those cover those So if we could just add in.
Can I say nicotine or annuals?
Nicotine products, you know, cause that would be, I would say actually.
That'll make gum.
But I would actually say any nicotine product not prescribed as a smoking cessation aid. Because I think if you have a, you have a kid who's got, you know, got into smoking and is trying to stop smoking, they can the, the doctor can suggest, you know, um nicotine gum. But it just like, I just think we're, by leaving that out, we're, we're skipping over like the biggest, it's the domain. Alright, well, go, yeah, go in, if you go into like, you'll see it at the convenience store. So just, they're like little tins, just like the little tobacco tins, but they're like generally white and they're filled with like little white packets. You'll also see them all over the ground. So, so my, my suggestion would be that we add, I guess, in that section of um either in e-liquid or e-cigarette, you know, um or liquid nicotine.
Right, yeah, it's up here, this is regular tobacco or something.
Yeah, tobacco, it's not really a tobacco product, but maybe in under liquid nicotine or we could just get like, we can get rid of nicotine product, any, any, any product composed either of all a part of pure nicotine, you know.
Not used for a smoking sensation aid.
Yeah, not, not.
Not prescribed.
I would say not prescribed.
Not prescribed as a.
Right.
Hopefully that won't ever be a case, but yeah, good, good coverage.
Do you wanna hold that one back um for second reading at the next one, see what it looks like? Or do you want Sharon to just add that and approve it tonight with those changes?
Um let's just.
I'd say we just approve it tonight with those changes.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Then I will make a motion that we approve policies A C E, A C F, A D B, A D C with the changes discussed tonight, B G A A, C A, B I D, D I D dash R, E E A B, G B C D dash R, G I H B A, I H B A dash R, J I C D, J K A A, J R A and K E E.
One second.
Thank you, Amy, thank you Jasmine, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Make a motion to withdraw policies A C dash R and G B E C.
Big ten?
As they are redundant. Second that, second.
Thank you Jasmine, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, sentences, not much who cares. Was there any other, um we had the minutes from, I think, uh the
Facilities.
Facilities, but that was last thing. Any other committees? The need is assessed. Alright, moving on. Uh nominations, recommendations, resignations.
We have two um nomination, one nomination, one recommendation um for Nancy Bartlett, the Director of People's Services.
I'll make a motion that we approve the nomination Nancy Bartlett for Director of People's Services.
One second.
Any further discussion about that?
Excited to have her back, yes. Yeah, I don't know if that graduate high school without that one. It's fantastic.
Is that gonna be a full-time position?
Yeah.
Um alright, uh any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, sentences, and not much who cares.
And then a recommendation for Pamela Webster for custodian.
Who Webster?
Pamela.
Pamela. Make a motion to set the recommendation for Pamela Webster as custodian.
Well, second, second.
All those in favor, or any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Will Pamela be in the elementary or the high school? Elementary, fantastic. Girls that were here last time were amazing, so hopefully.
So that much who cares, but no doubt. And uh school year calendar revision. So I met in the year um report that there was a issue that.
Yeah, apparently there was a miscount on the dates um during for the month of April. So there needs to be a change at the last day of school from June twelfth to June third.
Just give them a day. Don't you wish we could do that?
Just when we load it into the state.
Yeah.
It doesn't total to one.
Right, 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 right. It's kind of a no-brainer, I'll make a motion to to change the calendar to the last day of school as June thirteenth.
One second.
Amy, thanks Jasmine, any further discussion on that? Graduates or
I was thinking the same thing.
They're not gonna say anything.
Is it a half day or four days? Alright. Uh any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Close, sentences.
Not like we have a choice.
Alright, and then um the parent handle for people.
And I have to admit, I only got about half of it. So what, I would look it through, so.
Doesn't change much.
It does have the updated calendar, though, yeah.
I put the updated calendar already and I think that, as you said, it was a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Um the only other thing that will be updated aside from that, those policies um would be the names um to add.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Um I'll make a motion, we approve the handbook as we left it with the changes um after that meeting.
I just have a question, it was regarding the emergency program, closing school with late openings. An announcement shall be broadcast in W N R, is that still part of? An announcement shall be broadcast in W N R. Is that still part of the protocol?
Oh, yeah. Cause you're kidding. It's the first thing the kids do.
That's the first thing I check.
That's the first thing the kids do. They get right up and turn that TV on.
The TV, really?
Yeah. I, I look on my phone. Kids go get right up and turn the TV on.
That's why.
When they never canceled school. And so when Linwood appeared at the bottom, it was like.
It was streaming.
But even though I don't have cable either, I streamed the, the W N thing and they show it on there. Even if they do last night's broadcast, if it's early, they'll still have the thing on the. They're really good about it. And it is, it's kind of an anomaly to see Linwood public schools on there. Yes. Lincoln Woods like cooperative school. Yeah.
Uh, any further discussion on the handbook?
Oh, second.
Oh, we have a second.
Sorry.
Damian and Jasmine. Um, any further discussion on that? All of the papers, six five, are saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close sessions and not much who cares. Can we still send a physical copy of this? How old is this?
I used to make those magnets. Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, the calendar. We need to do that again.
After you guys like the.
Hey, how you doing? Yes.
Five twenty four to my goal.
I don't see anything other new business this evening. Um, under continuing business or continuing business. Look at that. So I don't see any students, but we do have.
Yes, um, I wanted to start off by saying my new windows look lovely. Saw them yesterday. It flies so easily. Their screen truly flies open. Can't wait. Um, we survived, Aaron Leux and I survived at the Lonesome Lake Hut with nine of our young men and women. Last night, it's an epic storm in the notch and I was really so appreciative of being in a hut. Um, we've never done that before. I've never done it personally. Uh, none of the kids had ever done it. And the food was unbelievable. They cooked this like phenomenal dinner. All of our kids tried everything, which I was really proud of them. They had, it was family style, so they were like in threes. And so, but they were sitting with other families and they had to talk and talk about where they were from. And they could, there were different languages being, it was cool. It was really, really neat.
That's fantastic.
Um, unfortunately Rebecca tested positive for COVID the, the morning before we were going to go, which, which only changed our plan a little bit, but I was not anticipating climbing cannon. That was not part of my personal plan. I was going to take a few of the kids uh, who were less motivated to get to the top of a mountain. We were going to do a nice little loop somewhere low. Um, but Rebecca didn't go. All the kids were like, we're all doing cannon. And I was like, okay. So they all did cannon, even some kids who were not hikers. Like they did not consider themselves as hikers at the beginning of the summer. Um, I do have a funny story about Musselaw. Emma Clark, Emma and Willa Clark have never really hiked before. They very much took this opportunity to get their P E credit, half of P E credit. And they were very focused on, I just have to go so I can get my P E credit. They weren't necessarily enjoying it all that much in the beginning. And then Musselaw, which is another four thousand footer, so Zagrad, every hike we went on was ninety degrees. And they got to the top and they were so proud and they were, we were taking their pictures and they were doing like the flexing photos. And then the boys had kind of started down and Willa, who's pretty quiet, was like, oh, wait, we need Ian. Because he was part of their trio and Ian Anderson is a seventh grader. And so Erin and Rebecca and I were like, we brought him into the photo. They're, they're taking selfies with Ian Anderson. That in regular life at the school, like that doesn't always happen where two incoming sophomores are going to take selfies with a seventh grade boy. Um, but they considered him part of their group. And it was one of the things that I just, that I love about girls of summer, that multi-age. And then this summer, we did a lot with the boys and I was not really totally sold on that. Um, but the relationships that they, it was very much a blended group until the huts. And then we like, you know, they, we were all in different classes. Um, and that made it, that made me see value in doing it together. We surveyed the kids in the spring because our not girls of summer numbers were dropping off. And that made me really sad because we've never had a issue getting kids to join. Um, and so we asked them what they wanted to do. And it turns out that more of them wanted to do things together than separately. So we tried it and it was, it was a learning curve for sure. I don't love being in the woods with my own sons, like age demographic. You know, they're, she just about put me over the edge last night. They have no real concept of like noise, those middle school boys. And here you are with like other people and they're fishing down at the pond and they think they're the only people in the universe. And I can hear Derek LaBelle like at the top of his lungs and in my head going, please, Karen, please tell those boys that there are others around us. Um, but Encore Thrift and Coffee Shop last year did like a, they did a fundraiser. Um, but I got to tell you, the hot thing, I don't know if I can go back to tending. So it may be something I might add to my budget next year. That's the only way I'm going to sleep out. But it did, I think, relieve some nerves of parents who we've, we've spent nights up on Liberty Hill, you know, Liberty Springs tent site during terrible thunderstorms. And parents are not always happy, you know, knowing that they can't contact their kid easily because we don't have service. Um, and so that was an awesome thunderstorm to watch from the nice shelter of the porch. And not feel like, oh, my sleeping bag is so wet. Um, the only other thing I wanted to share was that community soccer started for middle and high school kids and some adults in our community. And it's been awesome. Ten twenty five to thirty people show up on Tuesday and Thursday nights on the front field. And I love, there's always a couple like little ones thrown in the mix and it's really fun. Again, I love the multi-age thing. They've been, you know, they get people passed to them. It's not just like a big kid mosh of, of danger. Um, so. That's why our kids out there playing soccer and my, my fifth grade grandson had no idea what's in middle and high school and just went, yeah, okay, go for it, buddy. He's loving it. Loving it. That's awesome. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll see more reviewing, must argue any?
We have nothing enough of it.
Nothing to know about it.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mary. They're second.
No one's going to second.
Jasmine second. Paul is the favorite, six five, are saying aye. And then we are.
Thank you.